Been far less than that. So I'm, I'm not trying to project what the demand is going to be for Casa Dorinda's landscape needs plus the open space irrigation needs, but it, it, based on the historic, so far, nearly three years of pumpage to dis- supply the landscaping at Casa Dorinda, adding the 4.1 acre feet per year to that, it doesn't appear that we're gonna be pumping more than 29.5 acre feet per year.
And to follow up, with respect to question five, you know, your PowerPoint answers that with respect to the health of the trees, impact on the trees of drawing down water, but I don't see any information that addresses the effect of the water table of drawing down between 9.6 million and 17.6 million gallons a year from the aquifer. Could you comment on that?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, and it's a very fair question, good question. We have, as, I just went to the site yesterday because I wanted to verify some of the data that Casa Dorinda staff has been collecting from the water well. They have, Casa Dorinda staff has been measuring production from the meter on the well, which is an approved Montecito Water District meter, which is part of, probably the report you have in front of you. The, we measure a water level that's called a static water level, meaning the pump has been off for at least 24 hours. My reading yesterday of the depth of water after the pump had been off 24 hours since the previous Monday showed that the depth of water was 115.9 feet below ground surface. At, when the well was first drilled in 2014, before we really got into the meat of the drought, the depth of water was 111 feet below ground surface. We've had 4.9 feet of water level drawdown through, you know, the worst drought on record. So in my mind, that shows, we, the use of this well has not had a big impact on the overall groundwater basin, which would, is consistent with the amount of water that's been pumped out of the well, which has been far less than the maximum capacity of the well anyway.
Do you see, in your opinion, any other opportunities for water conservation or better stewardship of water, whether it's well or purchased water from Montecito Water District?
I have not walked through the grounds at Casa Dorinda to, to say, oh geez, we should turn that sprinkler down a little bit or something like that. I know that the staff is very dedicated to trying to minimize their water use because water's expensive, whether they're pumping on their own or buying it from Montecito. So I, I don't, I don't have any reason to think they're wasting water. There's always room for improvement, I'm sure, but yeah.
May I just clarify on basic math rather than complex calculations, but it seems to me that Casa in 2016, which was the worst year of the drought, used 17.8 acre feet of water for irrigation and anticipate adding 4.1 for a total of 21.9 acre feet when the open space is included in the water management. Is that correct?
That sounds right to me.
And the capacity is 29.5?
At least.
Actually, Madam Chair, if I may, based on the data I have, the well production was 17.8 feet, but the total water consumed at Casa Dorinda was 90, 38.8, and in fact, 2016 was the highest year for water usage of all three years at 12,643 gallons of water.
I understand, but I don't believe that water usage outside of the well is within our jurisdiction. We're talking about the well's capacity to be able to handle the open space, and that's, I think, all our concern should be. And based on this, the well, which has been dedicated to the open space, water is completely sufficient for that purpose.
That's absolutely correct.
Thank you. Commissioner Senauer.
Yes, thank you for being here. The annual safe yield of the well is what? The safe yield, is it 29 or is it 54?
Well, we, we, the way we present it is that if the well is pumped for 200 days out of a year, which is commonly during the middle of a winter, when not, you're not irrigating as much, and so we kind of not arbitrarily pick that 200 pumping days a year, it would, if you pump it at the 50 gallon a minute rate, which is what we recommend, for 16 hours a day for 200 pumping days a year, that equates to 29.5 acre feet per year. If, for, during a drought period, for example, where you might be pumping for more than 200 days a year, if for some reason it took pumpage, or, you know, 365 days out of that year, we had to pump 50 gallons a minute to keep up with irrigation or whatever demand there is, it, the well could do that and would produce the 50, I forget the number, but the higher, the higher number.
And, and the safe yield then is a dynamic with the aquifer groundwater, is that?
It, it, the safe yield, it's, it's, it really, that phrase is not appropriately applied to a well. It's, the safe yield is, is a phrase that applies to the total withdrawals from a groundwater basin compared to the recharge to that groundwater basin. So it's more accurately used to say that the safe yield of the Montecito groundwater basin is 1,000 acre feet per year, which is the number was determined by Hoover in 1980.
And that's, that's the clarification I was, your, it basically states that this well, the total amount of water use will still be significantly below the annual safe yield of the well.
Yeah, I, I, it's, it's, it's a, it's a not quite accurate.
Correct.
So you might more accurately say that the, the, the annual production capacity of that well is another way to say it, probably more than the safe field.
That was my understanding.
Yeah, thank you.
The other clarification is the well has been, I believe, constructed and up and running since about September 14th, somewhere in there.
Twenty fourteen, correct.
And so that's three years plus.
Almost, it was September 2014, and so we're not quite at September 2017, so we're a little less than three years.
And so was, was the open space area irrigated at all with that well wa-? I mean, everything, what I've come to understand is that with the drought, everything is in pretty poor condition, and yet you had irrigation via the well for, or Casa D had, Dorinda had irrigation for close to four years, three and a half. Was that well water not being used in irrigation on, on the, this area? I understand-
Of the, of the open space?
Yes.
I'm not aware of, I, I don't know the answer to that. I know that they did definitely use the water to irrigate the grounds, the developed grounds. How much did they use on the open space? It hasn't, I'm not aware of. It, it hasn't been separately metered, if that answers your question. And I think, I think we, if my, if my calendar's wrong, we are talking about September 2014 to September 2017, which we aren't quite at, so we're a little less than three years. Just point of reference, since we're tossing numbers around.
Thank you very much. May we, may I ask, I don't believe there are any more questions for you, but thank you for your, your testimony.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one question for Mr. Delagarza. And possibly you can answer the question, was Casa Dorinda doing any open space irrigation during the drought period?
No.
Thank you.
We don't, don't have an irrigation system installed out there yet.
Exactly, because on page 66 of your plan, it talks about the irrigation being temporary, the irrigation system being temporary. So you are going to install an above-ground irrigation system with lateral lines and drip tubing, et cetera. Do you have plans to remove that after five years, or will that stay in place?
So the, the lateral lines would, would most definitely be removed. The main line may be kept for emergencies when we need to water trees that are, that are declining in health, yeah. So that's, that's part of the, it's part of the, the maintenance.
I, I am concerned about the potential for the reappearance of the drought. I mean, we'd like to think it's gone forever, but if, if it turns out that we do have another period of extended drought, I'm wondering if there would be the capacity to irrigate this area. And would you plan to remove the potential for that? I mean, because it would seem that the main water line wouldn't be sufficient, or would it be? Do you need to leave the lateral lines in order to do that?
Well, we, we would have to remove these lateral lines. I mean, they're, they are not gonna persist and be functional over, over a period of time, so after, after they've served their purpose, after two to three years, and we we wean the plants from the water, we have to, we have to remove these lines. If we left them out there, they would be useless if, if, you know, for example, six years later, we decide we need to turn it on. The system would need to be completely updated and revised, and a lot of the tubing would have to be replaced, the sprinkler, the irrigation drip heads would have to be replaced. I mean, it, it's, if, if you have a drip system at your home, you understand it takes a lot of maintenance to keep that system functioning.
I do have a drip system at my home, and it's been in place for over 20 years, but it does require some maintenance.
Yes.
So what would your plan be for irrigation from the main line after two or three years when your, when your drip system is taken away? What would be the option?
Well, we still have the main line, so we could install, we can install lateral lines at any location along that main line.
So would, you would reinstall as needed then?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so my, my clients have a big investment in this, you know, they're spending, as you saw, you know, over $600,000 in doing this work, and they have a, an investment not only to, to get their money back, their bonds released, but to, to maintain this site in perpetuity. So of course they would be applying water as needed.
Right, actually, it was about in perpetuity that I was thinking, because certainly if a drought doesn't reappear within the next five or six years, we can assume it will at some point. So it would be nice to, good to know that there was the capacity for being able to do some irrigation such as has not been done during the past drought.
Yeah, so, so the main line is a, is an HDP E-line. It's, it's a very durable, thick line, it's a two-inch line, you could drive a tractor over it, a truck over it, and it will persist out there for time. It doesn't require a lot of maintenance, but the, the smaller lateral lines that you're probably mostly familiar with do not, do not last very long. They're much thinner and, and not as durable.
Okay, just as long as we have the ability, that's good to know, thank you. We're moving on to the last section, which was fuel management.
Here we are. So I, I was glad that you had an opportunity to meet with Kerry Kellogg. He's the Montecito Fire District Wildland Fire Specialist. I have been working with him out there on that property for the last, you know, five or six years since I've been involved, and he does perform regular inspections out at that site. And when the neighbors have a problem with the fuel management that's perceived out in the open space area, he's the person that gets that phone call. So the Montecito Fire Protection Fuel Management for Vacant Parcels, which is what they consider this open space area to be, requires 30-foot wide fuel baits, breaks around and across a property, dividing it into approximately one-acre sections. Grasses shall be mowed or disced to less than three inches in height. Disking is not an option for this open space area. It's expressly prohibited, and it's a bad idea, given the weeds that we've got out there that sprout so readily from cuttings. The fuel management requirements from structures, this is defensible space requirements, both at a state level and a local level, require defensible space of 100 feet from all sides of any structure, but not beyond the property line, except when adverse conditions exist as referenced, you know, as a paragraph below. Specimen trees or other ornamental vegetation needs to be pruned and maintained so as to prevent transmission of a fire to a structure. So this is really a lateral fuel, what the fire department calls lateral fuels, ladder fuels. They want to avoid the smaller shrubs from igniting the tree canopy. And the reason for that is once the tree canopy has been ignited and you have a, a 30, 40 mile an hour wind-driven fire, that the embers blow much farther than they would if they were just at a ground-level fire. All mature trees shall be trimmed up off the ground six feet above grade level, except for the young mature, young trees that are still growing, they do have exceptions for that. And native Russian shrubs within the required 100-foot defensible space should be thinned and stripped of dead or decadent fuels to provide and maintain adequate spacing between the plants in order to minimize fire spread. So when you first read this, you might have the visual idea that this is gonna be, you know, scorched earth or bare ground in these fuel management zones. And I know Commissioner Keller was probably very surprised when she walked around out at the Westmont campus and saw how close to structures the habitat restoration work was taking place, and how green it was. There wasn't a lot of dead wood out there, and in the few instances where there was some dead wood, you did ask Kerry, you know, well, is this acceptable? And the answer was yes, this is acceptable. We, Westmont is meeting their fuel management standards out there, and it, it is impressive, and it's beautiful. And, and I believe that Casa Dorinda's will look the same. There is a special exception for environmentally sensitive habitat, which exists out at Casa Dorinda along, adjacent to Montecito Creek. Selective fuel management shall be practiced to minimize the removal of clearance of dead or decadent native riparian vegetation to the extent feasible. Maintain native vegetation to the maximum extent possible, consistent with fuel modification requirements. And plants in excess of six inches in diameter generally are not required to be removed. So the shrubs that are actively growing and they're still green, the toya, the coffeeberry, the other plants that we're gonna plant for screening, they can be retained, as long as they're alive and don't have a lot of dead wood.
Thank you. Are there any questions about this? Commissioner Senauer, Commissioner Newman? The only thing I wanted to say is that walking through the space was incredibly helpful because we got a sense of what it would look like post-fire management, and it was very reassuring. Mr. Kellogg reported that the area adjacent to the buildings that we thought would need require much greater clearance would basically remain unchanged from how they currently look, and that what we perceived as being a cut-up of the open space to retain these one-acre areas was being accomplished with the, with the building of a new trail, a new north-south trail that you're proposing, and use of existing divisions. And for the people that may be watching this, it was very good to see how little changed the property would be but for the clearance of the 15 feet on either side of the trail. So thank you very much for, once again. Just, did you have a, you got a couple of public comment responses?
Yes, let me, let me see what's here. This, this was a mistake that I made when I wrote this plan, so I hadn't been, I included providing access for contractors from Wyant Road to do maintenance within the open space area. This is actually a prohibited activity from the easement and will be removed from the open space management plan. So the only, the only access from Wyant Road would be for emergency vehicles, fire department ambulances, things like that. Casa Dorinda's staff and their contractors performing the maintenance on, in the open space area will not be accessing the site from Wyant Road.
Just one question on that. How about the sanitary district and servicing the, the sewer system? They cannot use Wyant Road?
I don't know the answer to that question, whether they have an easement agreement.
Because accessibility.
They probably do, but I-
I, I would think that might be a caveat, because otherwise they're-
I'll look into that when I revise the plan.
Their approach might be through the woodland, et cetera, et cetera.
It, it probably is.
Thank you.
There was a comment from the public asking to retain all flowering plants except those that have the ru- the highest rating for invasiveness. Yeah, I, I think we've talked about this quite a bit. It would be against the condition requirements imposed on the project if we were to do that.
Thank you very much. Your half-hour presentation has only taken an hour and 20 minutes.
(laughing) Good thing I love to talk.
I think that we will go back to the staff who has some guidelines for our discussion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we have no public comment at this time for this item, so I was going to propose, before we have the return to the staff, that we have just a seven-minute break, and we come back at 11:05. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. We do have others, and I'll put you out there.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
I hope so, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I jumped over public comment because we had no speaker slips for item one. I just want to make sure there's no one present who would like to comment on item number one before moving back to our staff. All right, thank you. Then I again will say, public comment is closed. Please continue.
Thank you. So, I think that we have heard a number of things that your commission would like to have added or altered in the plan. The way I set these slides up is to first go through the elements of the open space management plan, and these were taken basically right from the table of contents. So hopefully, as you have these comments and as we recap them, we can just use that to focus the comments. So, there was an introduction, there was a description of natural resources, management goals and objectives and guidelines, and then a summary of the allowable uses and restrictions, and so that is all pretty much set in stone. Then we go to the required elements, which are the management actions and activities described in the plan: removal and control of invasive, fuel management and fire hazard reduction, oak woodland habitat enhancement, the tree management plan, the wildlife management plan, performance standards and success criteria, and monitoring and reporting. So, for each of these, we have basically just a slide kind of recapping. Would, how would you like to do this? Would you like to bring up your comments for each slide, or would you like me to summarize what you've asked for so far?
I think it would be helpful if you would summarize what we've asked for, and then we will amend or add to at the time.
Sure.
Commissioner Newman?
So, as each topic comes up, you'd like any additional comments at that time?
Comments related to that topic, so we can consolidate them all.
Sure.
Thank you. That, I think that would be helpful.
Thank you. So, with respect to exotic vegetation removal, I think that the thing that would probably fall under there is that you would like to prohibit the use of glyphosate or glyphosate within 10 feet of either side of the trail?
I believe that was correct. Is there any correction to that? Yes, that was one. Yes, Mr. Newman?
Yeah, I would like to go further. This is my greatest concern about this open space plan. It's my personal opinion that glyphosate with P O E A is perhaps the contemporary successor to DDT about which Rachel Carson wrote in Silent Spring. In my view, it's an unacceptable environmental risk or associated with it. It's been found to be a probable cause of cancer by the World Health Organization. The California EPA Office of Environmental Health Hazard has said it will list it under Prop 65. It has been found to be in infant formula, breast milk, honey, and soy. And I'm especially concerned, considering the proximity of vegetation removal to Montecito Creek, that Roundup would be utilized in an area where it is toxic to aquatic life. It's also harmful to bees, which are critical to pollination and which are declining in population. So, I would like to see further restrictions on the use of glyphosate.
Do you have some specific recommendations?
I would not like to see it utilized anywhere proximate to Montecito Creek, and would instruct and direct it to be the herbicide of last resort. There are additional organic herbicides which do not seem to be considered by the applicant, including soaps, iron-based herbicides, salt-based herbicides, corn gluten, and corn gluten. So, in my, my preference is that glyphosate be absolutely utilized at a minimum, if at all, and that it not be utilized anywhere proximate to the creek or where there's any danger at all of that nature.
May I just ask my fellow commissioner, how would you address the fact that the flood district is using it in weed abatement within the flood plain?
I would share that concern with the flood district as well, and this is a product which I cannot in good conscience approve its widespread usage on this property. It is a danger to our community, to our health, and to aquatic life.
Ms. Senauer?
I would like to see Roundup used at an extreme minimal amount. I understand there is, there is some Roundup that needs to be applied in quantities. I would like to keep that as, as low as possible, minimal as possible. So, basically, I concur with Commissioner Newman on most of this. As far as an alternative, I understand the, the alternatives are, are far and few between, but I, I do believe glyco phosphate, glyphosate should be used minimally. Thank you.
I think then in summary, we're all in agreement that Roundup should be an herbicide of last resort, and I'm not sure we can be more specific than that. But I think we all agree that the very least possible use should be employed. And Commissioner Newman, do you have something more specific than that?
Yeah, I do. Looking at the south, at the quadrant right here by the river, or probably the Montecito Creek, where there are vegetation to be eradicated, I would ensure and like to prohibit the use of Roundup or glyphosate in that area. That it not be used at all.
Do you concur with this, Commissioner Senauer?
Yes.
I would agree. I think this is one of the areas of our greatest concern, so our recommendation, our comment would be that we would like it to be the herbicide of last resort and that not be used at all in the vicinity of Montecito Creek.
Thank you. Chairman Keller?
And the next, may I just say, in addition to that, where they were talking about stump removal?
Right.
I would like some direction on that, please. I mean, the suggestion was that Casa Dorinda was willing to bring in a stump grinder to accessible areas, and I believe that we may all be in concurrence with this. Commissioner Senauer?
Yes, I concur. I think this is appropriate and necessary to, to grind as many stumps as, as possible. Thank you.
Commissioner Newman?
Agreed, and, you know, any non-chemical removal process is fine.
Thank you. Yes, I think that to the extent it will not harm other vegetation and the area is accessible, we would like the use of stump grinders as extensive as possible.
Thank you. So, moving on then to fuel management and fire hazard reduction. We don't actually have any changes in this area that I recall.
Commissioner Senauer? Commissioner Newman? Having, having had the site visit, which was extremely helpful, all of those questions, I believe, have been answered. Thank you.
Good. With regard to the oak woodland habitat enhancement, so do we have a separate section for aesthetics? No, I think this would be the place where we would talk about putting the larger trees at the south for additional buffering, right, putting some 15s among the 5s in areas the public likes to use for trails.
Commissioner Senauer?
Agreed. Confirm.
I agree as well. Where, where feasible, I'd like to see 15 gallon used.
Thank you. I think that Mr. Delagarsa was open to the idea of interspersing some 15 gallon in that area. Thank you.
This might also be the place to talk about the added condition to remove the drain within the open space. I believe it's within one of those oak enhancement areas.
Are you talking about the well or the dry well?
It's a, the feature, yes.
We're calling it a well even though it isn't.
Okay. Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Senauer?
Agreed. Thank you.
Commissioner Newman? All right, yes, we would all like them to proceed with that as they have proposed.
I don't recall anything that your commission wanted to be changed in the tree management section.
Commissioner Senauer?
I just, did we go through aesthetics? Was that, have we touched on that? Or will, will we?
I think this is probably, it's not one of the actual elements or management activities, but there, we definitely should go through that. It's not something I have on my slide, but let's include it.
Thank you.
I would just, in that category, add the graffiti issue, and I, I would hope it could be, I'd like to support its removal and continuing monitoring and evaluation, and if any appears, that Casa Dorinda be so kind as to be responsible for its removal and mitigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Could that have been in the previous section? No? Well, you'll find the right section for that, because I think we're all in support of that. Commissioner Newman, is that something you support?
It is, and maybe under, I think we're in this topic, with respect to management actions and monitoring, I'm interested in perhaps having the bond period extend beyond five years. The 85 percent, for instance, figure was quoted until that is attained, or some other standard rather than just a chronological one.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, that five-year period is already codified in the approved conditions of approval for the project, so it's, it's a part of the previously approved project conditions.
However, my understanding is that if the 80 percent coverage is not completed within five years, then it can be extended.
Absolutely correct.
Is that sufficient for you, Mr. Newman?
If it so provides.
The, the condition is clear that the success criteria have to be met. All the success criteria, not just the 80 percent coverage, but all the success criteria have to be met before we release that maintenance bond. So, it would get extended out as necessary. It could be one year, it could be two years, but until they meet the success criteria, we hold on to that.
So, maybe the affirmative way to state what has been stated is that if that percentage is not attained, then the, then the bond requirement shall be extended, not that it may.
Is that clear in the language, or is that something we can change, please?
I, I think it's, it's fairly clear in, in the condition language as currently written. I don't think it needs any modification in that regard.
Thank you. And as I understand, Mr. Delagarsa said that the Westmont five-year period had been extended to six because of the drought. Is that correct? Well, I was asking that, but I think that's correct. Thank you. Okay.
I think that we, I probably skipped one, which is that the plan will be revised to prohibit normal access via Wyant Road, and I'm not sure where in the plan that's located, but it would simply be removed.
Where it was mentioned in the plan?
Right, right.
I, I think there's no disagreement on that. Thank you.
I would just add perhaps a caveat that if, if, it shouldn't be prohibited for, it could be used in necessary maintenance, i.e. for the sanitary district, for perhaps a stump grinder if the tree was right there, that sort of thing.
Or perhaps fire access as well.
Well, Commissioner Senauer and staff, I believe that what Mr. Delagarsa was referring to was the mention in the plan of using Wyant Road for maintenance, so we have no control or knowledge of the use of sanitation or any other source. But the reference to maintenance from Wyant Road, I think, was what concerned the residents, and so if that's removed, I think that will be satisfactory.
Okay. I don't have on my list any additional changes that you requested, but we can go back to any slide that you'd like if you want to revisit any area.
Commissioner Newman?
The only concern I have, as I stated on the record earlier, is that the absolute best water stewardship practices be implemented with respect to irrigation and water usage.
Commissioner Senauer? Do you have anything in addition? I did have two other items, and I'm not quite sure where they might fit in. Tagging on to the water maintenance, I don't know how to suggest that, because in the plan, it talks about stopping irrigation after two years, and I'm wondering about the mechanism for continuing that if it's needed. I just want to make the comparison between Westmont and Casa Dorinda. When we toured Westmont, which now looks beautiful and lush, it was acknowledged that until this past winter, it was pretty dead and dismal looking. And that was more acceptable at Westmont because the areas of replanting were down in gullies and were basically outside of public view. It was on, it's on private property used by students and members of the Westmont family. But in Casa Dorinda, these areas that are going to be irrigated are used by the public on a regular basis and are in public view. And I am hopeful that the irrigation will continue until there is certainty that either the planting will not be challenged or by drought, or that everything is as well established as desired, and I don't know how that can be addressed. Do you have a comment, Commissioner Newman?
I do. I, it was my intention, maybe implicitly, that by having the percentage of coverage as a standard for release of the bond, that we have an economic security that by irrigation, replanting, or whatever may be necessary, that Casa Dorinda will continue to maintain and do what is necessary for the open space plan to attain what we're looking for, and that by translating it into a coverage percentage, that we're ensuring that irrigation or whatever is necessary will occur.
I, I think that is the intent of the 80 percent five-year. I guess I would just like to ask Mr. Delagarsa if I may call you back. So, the two-year limitation on irrigation, or the plan to stop irrigation after two years, is that a flexible timeline?
Yes, of course. Normally, what happens is we irrigate intensively for two-year period, and by the third year, we start to wean the plants. And, and if it were a drought, I would continue the watering.
And so, in Westmont, which was planted about five years ago, why did the irrigation not continue?
So, at the Westmont project, we, we installed the plant materials before the drought started, and we had them installed for about a two-year period where we, so we had started the weaning process when the drought really kicked in, the first year of the drought. We had no idea the drought was going to continue for almost five years, so we did not continue. The success criteria on that project also required that the client not irrigate for three years in order for the bond to be released. That was a condition of approval. So, I, I actually had to extend the length of the bond for almost two years, and if I had started irrigating again, then I would have had another five-year extension, or, excuse me, three years of no irrigation, I would have had to get through that in order to meet the success criteria, so.
Thank you. So, is that three-year no irrigation part of the current conditions on this project?
I, I haven't got them memorized. Sorry.
No, I'm, I'm asking staff, because
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I believe
They can find it sooner than I can.
I don't know about the three years, but I believe there is a requirement that they, that they be weaned off by the time we release the bonds. Whether that's for three years or two years, I'm not sure. But, you know, one provision, we could include some language regarding that even though the plant material will be weaned off of irrigation, we could make sure that the irrigation equipment remain in place through the maintenance, entire maintenance period, so that if turns out additionally irrigation is required, at least the equipment would still be there to facilitate that.
That was my concern when asking about the, the drip system. So, you're talking about the maintenance period being five years?
Or however, you know, as may be extended if, if need be, but, you know, rather than just once they've been weaned, removing the irrigation entirely, then the equipment, instead just shutting the valves off and leaving the equipment there in the, in the event that, that there's a future subsequent need during that maintenance period to re-irrigate.
Thank you. Commissioner Senauer?
I concur. I think there has to be flexibility with this. And in, in what regard, the irrigation can be maintained or pulled back and, and reapplied, et cetera, but I think it's of import that there is flexibility so this area can be irrigated. Droughts will come and go. They may come quicker than before, we just don't know. But I think it's insurance that that area and sustainable commitment to that area to ensure that irrigation is provided as needed. Thank you.
Ms. Gerber, did you find anything regarding a three-year no irrigation?
In, in a way, Madam Chair. So, in condition number 13 of the COP revision, which is the tree replacement condition, it talks about the trees being, any replacement trees being weaned off irrigation for a period of two to three years. And then, in a separate location, it talks about that the, the trees have to be found in satisfactory condition, basically, before the installation, before the maintenance bond would be released. So, if you put those two things together, basically, it's saying you need to have the trees off of irrigation for several years, and then they have to be in good condition, and then we will release the maintenance bond.
Okay, just to, for clarification, may I suggest that we say a three-year period of no irrigation, and we also say that the irrigation system shall stay in place until the bond is released? Is, how does my fellow commissioners feel about that? Ms. Senauer? Mr. Newman?
That's acceptable.
I agree.
Thank you. I mean, I think that's the purpose, and this just codifies it a little better. And the only other thing that I had, if I can go ahead, if nobody else has anything, is there were several good points made by Dale Zarowski in her letter, one of which is that the wood chips that are taken off the trees, and I understand not eucalyptus, not olive, et cetera, but certainly the oak wood chips, the property would really benefit if they were retained in the area, possibly along the trails where the weed, where the cutting is going to occur. And apparently, it's, the habit has been in the past to remove the chips and put them on the main part of the Casa Dorinda campus, and if they were retained in the restoration area, that would be a benefit.
Yes, I support that.
Mr. Newman, do you have any comments? Yes, he supports that as well. Thank you. So, are there any other additions or comments? If not, I think you have all of our additions and corrections, and will we see this as a final document before it's, how, how will this proceed, please?
Madam Chair, the applicant will come in with a revised plan. Staff will review it to make sure all of your comments have been incorporated, and then the plan will be finalized.
Very good. So, we won't see it again, but we will rely on you. You have good notes, and you know our intentions.
Yes.
Thank you very much. With that, I believe we have finished our comments and are prepared. There is no motion, I don't believe. There is no motion, I don't believe, that's involved? No, there's no motion. We're just making comments. Therefore, thank you very much. We're ready to move on to item number two. And I would ask, I would thank very much the team from Casa Dorinda for all your time and all your input, and especially for the extra time to give us the site visits. That was extremely helpful.
And also, if I may add, I appreciate your flexibility on some of the issues of concern to us, and apologize that you've had to return so many times due to our docket, but thank you for your patience and indulgence in both regards.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I request a five-minute break to get set up for the next item?
Absolutely. So we'll reconvene at 11:35. Thank you. So we're reconvening the meeting at the Montecito Planning Commission with item number two. Would Mr. Vila, would you please read this into the record?
Yes, excuse me. Thank you, Madam Chair. Following this hearing on the request of the Planning and Development Department that the Montecito Planning Commission receive a staff briefing regarding detached accessory structures and provide initial comments and recommendations regarding potential amendments to the Montecito Architectural Guidelines and Development Standards and/or the Montecito Land Use and Development Code and coastal zoning ordinance that would regulate the size and number of detached accessory structures allowed on residential parcels in the Montecito Community Plan area.
Thank you very much. Is there any ex parte or site visit disclosure in regard to this? Thank you. Then we're prepared for the staff presentation. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Keller and Commissioners. My name is Jessica Steele, and today I'll be doing a briefing regarding architectural guidelines and ordinance standards that pertain to detached accessory structures in Montecito. So today, we'd like to provide you with some background on Phase Two of the Montecito Architectural Guidelines and Development Standards Limited Update. And we'd like to present several issues that we believe can be addressed within the scope of this project, three of which pertain to the zoning ordinances, and one of which pertains to the guidelines. And then we'll go over next steps for the project. And again, staff is seeking initial comments and direction from you in going forward with proposing amendments to the guidelines and/or zoning ordinances. No formal action is required today, but we'd like your input. So with the adoption of Phase One of the limited update to the guidelines in May 2016, there were new guidelines that were implemented that limited basement and attached accessory structure floor area. And residents raised concern that this may lead to a proliferation of detached accessory structures because their floor area is not addressed within the guidelines. And the subsequent increase in the size, bulk, and scale of development from a proliferation of detached accessory structures may not be compatible with the semi-rural character of Montecito. So therefore, the Board of Supervisors added Phase Two to the Long Range Planning 2016-2017 Work Program, and they directed staff to address the size and/or number of detached accessory structures on residential parcels. So given that our scope was to address detached accessory structures contributing to size, bulk, and scale, staff chose to focus only on a subset of accessory structures that would also be considered buildings, meaning roof structures supported by walls or columns. So you may here us use the phrase detached accessory buildings. Some examples are included in the left-hand column, and those structures that we are not going to be addressing within the scope of this project are included in the right-hand column, such as a pool, which would not be visually obstructive. The guidelines do not address the size or number of detached accessory structures. The zoning ordinances do regulate the size and height of individual detached accessory structures, but some ordinance standards are unclear, and thus may lead to different interpretations of these standards. This may lead to an increase in the height and size of some detached accessory structures, leading parcels to appear overdeveloped and be incompatible with surrounding development. And to address these potential problems, staff consulted with Development Review Planners, MBAR, and attended several M.A., or Montecito Association meetings to gather input on these perceived issues. And with that, we were able to identify four key issues, which we will go over in the following slides. First is unenclosed accessory buildings. The zoning ordinances currently limit detached accessory structures to a building footprint of 800 square feet. However, this may exclude unenclosed accessory buildings, meaning buildings with a solid roof that are supported by columns, such as carports or covered breezeways. These structures still contribute to the size, bulk, and scale of development, but the ordinances are not clear on whether the 800-square-foot limit applies to them because they do not have walls. Therefore, there are two possible interpretations of the zoning ordinance standard. First is that the footprint applies only to portions that are enclosed by walls. And second, that the footprint applies to all portions contained under one solid roof. When staff went to MBAR this March, they agreed that any detached accessory building under a solid roof should be subject to the 800-square-foot limit because they contribute to the size, bulk, and scale of development, and staff agrees with this interpretation. Related to this, MBAR recommended that the zoning ordinances clearly define certain accessory structures that may be partially open or have lattice-style roofs, such as a pergola or trellis.
I'm sorry to interrupt because we were trying not to, but you're saying the partially open or lattice roof, does that qualify as a solid roof?
Right. We would be saying that those do not count as having a solid roof. So we'd want to clearly state that in the zoning ordinances if possible.
Thank you, because this sentence is a little inconclusive. It says, "MBR recommended that the zoning ordinances clearly define certain structures with partially open or lattice roofs." And you don't go on to say, "Do not fall under this regulation."
Yes, I'm sorry. It would be to avoid the confusion, to state that they do not count towards, you know, potentially count towards floor area calculations because they're more open style and would not be as visually obstructive.
Thank you. Commissioner Newman?
Yeah, the terminology is difficult, and I think we need to be very consistent. So looking at your slide four, my own sense is that the buildings listed on the left are indeed then items that have a solid roof and, I presume, are different from those on the right. So I think it would be helpful if we talked about structures as being those items that do not have a solid roof and buildings as those that do. Is that consistent with staff's desires?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Newman, actually, the definition of structure is quite broad and can include structures with, can include structures that have a solid roof or don't have a solid roof. So what we were trying to say is that within, pardon me, within the definition of accessory structures, what we're trying to focus on are those buildings that have solid roofs. They may or may not have enclosures, that is, they may or may not have walls. The roof may be supported by posts or columns. So we do have a bit of a hierarchy based on the current definitions right now.
Would it be helpful to introduce the phrase roofed structure?
Certainly, for purposes of discussion here, we can certainly begin that discussion and then see how that plays out.
So, Madam Chair, I'm just going to make a suggestion to the commission. We're really trying to get general feedback, and we will certainly work on ordinance language that makes it clearer. But if you need clarification to have the discussion today, I totally get it, but I don't think we have to resolve how we're going to refer to it in the ordinance.
Exactly. No, I would like to continue. It's just it was a little confusing, specifically because the sentence didn't have a conclusion. And so, thank you very much. Please continue.
So the second issue that was discussed was that of the height limit. And the height limits in the zoning ordinances vary depending on the type of accessory structure, such as if it is a guesthouse or a studio or cabana versus any other type of accessory structure. And they also vary depending on the location, such as in the inland area or the coastal zone. So the Montecito Land Use and Development Code states that the maximum height for general accessory structures is 16 feet, but it also specifies that guesthouses, artist studios, and cabanas shall not exceed a height of 16 feet or contain more than one story and may be located above or below another accessory structure. And the coastal zoning ordinance simply states that the maximum height of accessory structures shall not exceed 16 feet. There's a little bit of a lack of specificity when it comes to the maximum height limit, and that leads to two possible interpretations of the height limit for detached accessory structures. The first being that the maximum height for detached accessory structures with one or two stories is 16 feet, or that the maximum height for detached accessory structures is 16 feet. And so a two-story structure with a guesthouse, artist studio, or cabana located above or below another separate accessory structure use could have an overall height of 32 feet. MBAR felt comfortable with allowing two-story detached accessory structures in the inland area because they believe they have sufficient tools to regulate height. They were more concerned with limiting height near property lines to avoid visual or privacy concerns. Staff recommends amendments to the Montecito Land Use and Development Code only to clarify the maximum height, and we do not recommend changes to the coastal zoning ordinance as those would likely loosen the current restrictions. So the third issue was rear setback regulations. The zoning ordinances state that accessory structures may be located in the rear setback area, provided that they do not exceed 30% of the required setback area. However, the ordinances are not explicit regarding how to apply these standards, so there are two possible interpretations. The first one is that a single accessory structure may not exceed 30% of the rear setback area, or two, that the cumulative total of all accessory structures may not exceed 30% of the rear setback area. MBAR unanimously agreed that the latter interpretation should be used, and that the cumulative total of detached accessory structures should not occupy more than 30% of the rear setback area. Otherwise, detached accessory structures would be allowed to occupy up to 100% of the setback area and thus negate the need for a standard. So staff agrees with this interpretation, that we should be looking at the cumulative total of detached accessory structures. And the fourth issue is floor area. And the idea here was presented to the Board of Supervisors when they initially added Phase Two to the Long Range Planning Work Program. To address the size of detached accessory structures, the Montecito Association proposed an idea for a guideline, and they suggested that detached accessory structure aggregate floor area be given an allowance equal to 10% of the recommended maximum house net floor area that is set in the guidelines. And when the aggregate detached accessory structure floor area exceeds that 10% threshold, then the excess would be added to the house net floor area. Addressing the issue in this manner gives property owners the ability to develop detached accessory structures, but they would have to balance it against the size of their home. So to illustrate this, we have some examples. So here we have a 10,000-square-foot parcel, about a quarter of an acre, and the recommended maximum house net floor area for a parcel this size would be about 2,400 square feet. So 10% of that would be approximately 237, 235 square feet. So that would be the freebie or allowance that detached, for detached accessory structures to be developed on the property. So let's say an owner wanted to build the maximum-size detached accessory structure that they can build under the zoning ordinances, which would be 800 square feet. This would be possible, but the excess, which is about 562 square feet, would have to be accounted for within the house net floor area.
I'm sorry. So you're suggesting that the house could only, could not be that, would have to be smaller in order to accommodate the larger accessory structure?
Chair Keller, yes, that's the idea. Or if they already have their house built, then the idea is that it would kind of limit them to a certain floor area for their detached accessory structures.
Thank you.
So MBAR felt that a new guideline would be helpful, but they were unsure about the 10% amount for the threshold. And they recommended that staff return with options and examples. So we've created several of them on the next few slides, and we'll go through them with you. And we're seeking your input on what you think would be an appropriate threshold, or if you have any other ideas for a guideline. So here we have the same 10,000-square-foot parcel with the same size, or, excuse me, house slightly underneath the recommended maximum. So if, like I said, they made a smaller house, they would have an opportunity to develop more detached accessory structures. And then here, this is to give you an idea of what this small parcel would look like with the maximum amount of development possible within the guidelines and zoning ordinances. So you have an accessory dwelling unit, detached accessory structures, the largest possible-sized house, and an attached garage. house, and an attached garage. Now, if we increased the detached accessory structure allowance to equal 20% of the recommended maximum house net floor area, then you would be allowed to get about 475 square feet for detached accessory structures. And again, if you flex the size of your house and make it a little smaller, then that gives you more room to develop these detached accessory structures. But even with the 20% allowance for a parcel this size, they still wouldn't be able to develop a detached accessory structure at the maximum 800 square feet unless they took 325 square feet into account in their house net floor area. If they wanted to develop a detached accessory structure at the maximum size possible, even if we put the threshold at 20% of the recommended maximum house net floor area, developing an 800 square foot structure would mean that they are 325 square feet over. And that would have to be accounted for in the house net floor area. So either they would have to have a detached accessory structure 325 feet smaller or take that from their house, if it was not built already, supposing. And then here is another scenario where you see the maximum amount of development possible, given a 20% detached accessory structure allowance with your ADU, detached accessory structures, home, and garage. So now shifting to a larger-sized parcel. If you had something, say, 90,000 square feet or about two acres, the recommended maximum house net floor area is 6,000 square feet, which is shown. And a 10% detached accessory structure allowance would be 600 square feet. So you can see the development takes up considerably less space on a parcel this size. And even with a larger accessory dwelling unit of 1,000 square feet that would be potentially allowed on this parcel, they still have a lot of room to develop detached accessory structures. But if they wanted one that was the maximum of 800 square feet, they're still a little bit over, about 200 square feet over, that would have to be accounted for in the house net floor area. And finally, if you increase that allowance to 20% for detached accessory structures, then on a parcel this size, they would be able to develop detached accessory structures that are the maximum size of 800 square feet. In fact, they'd have 1,200 square feet available to do that without taking away from that of their house. So you can see that even with the maximum amount of development possible here, there's still, it doesn't, probably wouldn't look overdeveloped, there's still quite a bit of room on the parcel.
A question. You have kept the detached ADU, which as we know is a completely separate issue, at 1,000 square feet, but they are allowed to be 1,200 square feet, aren't they? Under the current state guidelines?
Madam Chair Commissioners, we did just kind of arbitrarily pick a number. We didn't necessarily max out the size of the ADU, but we just picked a number to be consistent from example to example. I think the key point to recognize here, if it wasn't clearly stated, is that the approach that we used under Phase One, where we looked at attached structures, accessory structures, we did not count or factor in ADU into the floor area because of the issues surrounding those structures and that they require ministerial review. So we continue that practice and recommendation in me. So really, when we're showing the ADUs, it's for illustrative purposes, it does not count toward any of the calculations, however.
Yes, we know that. However, I'm just saying, in your example, you're showing a smaller-than-allowed ADU. So that if we want to get a real idea of the coverage, of the lot coverage that you're proposing, possibly the 1,200 square feet would have been more instructive.
Madam Chair Commissioners, my understanding is that your commission is leaning toward a direction of not allowing 1,200 square feet and is actually looking at a cap of 1,000 square feet. So not to contradict that, we did choose the 1,000 square foot as, again, for illustrative purposes.
I see. I thought the 1,000 square feet would be on the smaller lot, so that was my understanding. Commissioner Newman?
Thank you. I find these examples to be helpful, but have a question. In looking at the floor area issue, if somebody had a lot of, whether it's a quarter of an acre, two acres, or whatever, and they wanted to have the DAS be above, for instance, a garage, in other words, go up vertically as opposed to creating a new footprint for a new structure, how would that affect the calculus here? I don't see any of these illustrations affecting the vertical possibility of that, which is allowed, as I understand it.
Well, I think one of the two points that we've talked about here is, you know, how we handle circumstances where you have one accessory structure located on top of another. And we found that there is some confusion or perhaps inconsistency in the ordinances that makes it unclear about what you do under those circumstances in terms of height. And that's one of the issues that I think is outstanding and we're going to need to address one way or the other.
And I agree with your comment, but I'm looking for some staff guidance and input on that so that, for instance, instead of building a new freestanding DAS, if somebody were to want to build a DAS on top of an existing structure, how would we look at that in the calculus here and in the various scenarios? I'm just seeing it not as having been addressed here and I'm looking for staff input and thought.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Newman, Julie Harris here, part of the project team. For these examples, we just wanted to illustrate how the total square footage would be addressed when you look at recommended maximum house net floor area. If somebody wanted to put the detached structure on top of the garage, for square footage calculations under recommended house net floor area, those numbers would be the same. You would still calculate them the same. The difference is, you just wouldn't see, you wouldn't see a structure on the ground in this example. And so, since this is a two-dimensional plan, looking from above, you wouldn't see it on the ground as lot coverage. However, if you looked at the elevations, you would then see a taller structure at the garage, because you'd have the garage on the lower level and the detached above.
I appreciate that. The one, I guess, question I have then is if there was an exceeded square footage over the maximum, but it was going to be vertical, you'd still recommend, it would be staff's recommendation, that be included in the house?
Commissioner Newman, through the chair. Yes, the square footage calculations would be the same. And as is currently allowed under the guidelines, the MBAR would make the decision whether to allow that overall development to exceed the recommended maximum house net floor area or to tell them that, no, it's still too big for the neighborhood and you need to adjust your development in some other way.
And I have one other question in the, with the accessory dwelling units, I'm sorry, my memory fails, that I can't recall how the height that we are recommending as a limit for the accessory dwelling units. I thought it was going to be 25 feet. I know that's the case within the coastal zone, but possibly Commissioner Newman remembers.
I believe my recollection was 25 feet or no higher than the existing roof peak. So that there would be symmetry, so to speak.
Now, I'm just, so I'm just concerned because under what's happening here, we can make that recommendation, but right now, there is a 32-foot height possibility, correct? Just a moment, I'd just like a staff's response.
Chair Keller, yes, currently in the inland area, it would be technically 35 feet is the maximum height, but within the coastal zone, it's 25 feet.
But the accessory, excuse me, the detached accessory structures, right now, we're talking about 32 feet, 16 plus 16.
Chair Keller, if it, if we had a stacked structure, yes, it would be 32 feet and then there is potentially an additional three feet if the roof pitches for over 12.
And comparing that to ADUs, if we had an ADU above an existing garage, it's my understanding that the combined total could only be 25 feet. Is that correct or am I mistaken? I would just like to see if there is consistency here.
Chair Keller, we believe that's correct, yes.
Thank you. So Commissioner Senour, you had something to add?
I have a question about stacked DASs. That's permitted or is that, is that to be commented and reviewed?
Chair Keller, Commissioner, yes, stacked accessory structures are currently allowed within the inland area.
But if what Ms. Harris said is correct, the size limitations would still apply, the square footage limitations would still apply?
Chair Keller, yes, those size limitations would still apply. And just to be clear, if you were going to have a stacked accessory structure, it would have to be with a guest house, artist studio, or cabana located above or below that other separate use.
I'm sorry, that, now I'm unclear. So you're saying that the below structure, it couldn't be a garage, you didn't mention a garage? It seemed to me that you could put a DAS on top of anything that was already permitted as long as it met the size requirements. Is that correct?
Madam Chair Commissioners, the, it may be helpful to go back to the one slide that we talked about the issue. Essentially, the way the Montecito Land Use and Development Code is, currently reads is, there's a general section on accessory structures and it sets a height limit. But when you get to a subsequent section that deals with cabanas, artist studios, and guest house, those provisions allow essentially those structures, those three structures, to be built above or below another accessory structure. So in order to have a essentially stacked structure or one above or below, one of those uses above or below has to be an artist studio, guest house, or cabana. So if you had a garage and you wanted to put a workshop above it, you could not do that under the current rules. However, if you have a garage and you want to put an artist studio above it, you could do that. So really, the above or below has to be linked to one of those three uses.
How about an ADU above a garage? That's a whole different category, correct?
That's correct.
Commissioner Newman?
Yep, Madam Chair, maybe before we go to public comment, if I may pose one question to staff. With respect to issue number four on floor area, I understand that the Montecito Association has suggested 10% and you're looking for some guidance from us. Does the staff have any recommendation or thoughts about a threshold?
Chair Keller, Commissioner Newman, we do not have a current set number. I believe 10% was the number that was suggested, but I don't believe that was a concrete figure. In fact, MBAR recommended perhaps a sliding scale or something to accommodate for both the smaller parcels and the larger parcels.
Your mic is off.
I'm sorry, does staff have a recommendation for us to consider?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. You can appreciate how much you are struggling to maintain the distinction between ADUs and DASs. And I think that if you'll continue to help us work through this, we'd appreciate it. If there are no further questions, we'll call for a public comment at this time. Oh, yes, Ms. Harris?
Commissioner Keller, I don't think we've quite finished our presentation.
I'm sorry, don't think we've?
I'm not sure we've quite finished our presentation.
Beg your pardon, we clearly didn't. I apologize.
Chair Keller, Commissioner, sorry, just a couple more slides. So next step, for, next steps for the project are going to include a public workshop. We are going to go to an additional meeting with MBAR and the Montecito Association. And then after public outreach, we plan to draft amendments to either the guidelines or zoning ordinances or both, and return to you for formal action. And then we'll go to the Board of Supervisors as well. And this staff briefing and the request for your commission's comments and direction is an administrative activity that does not authorize new development. And therefore, it would not be a project and would not be subject to SEQA pursuant to Guideline Section 15378 and 15060. Now, if you have any additional comments or questions or would like to open it up to public comment, we're all done.
Thank you. I just have one other question because I have a copy of the guidelines here and I don't see, do you, can you refer me to the section where it talks about, I'm not finding quickly, maybe you've been looking at it, the accessory, the detached accessory structure current?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I believe that you would find that in the zoning ordinance. So there are sections in the zoning ordinance that deal with detached accessory structures and requirements.
So it's not currently in the architectural guidelines? I understood it, that this reference to artist studio, et cetera, was in the architectural guidelines.
It's in the zoning ordinance.
It's in the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Which I don't have a copy of. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Newman?
And one question with respect to next steps, getting to the bottom line for us, return to MPC for formal action. Do you have an estimated timetable as to when you'll be back to us?
Chair Keller, Commissioner Newman, we were hoping for possibly late summer or fall of this year.
Thank you. And Commissioner Senour?
Yes, what does public outreach, what are the components of it and the approach, please?
Chair Keller, Commissioner Senour, we were hoping to do a public workshop in which we would present something similar to what we just presented to you with the issues we've, as we see them, and maybe some examples on ways to regulate detached accessory structures, either within the zoning ordinances or guidelines, and kind of get input from the public from there.
And where would that occur?
We do not currently have a venue set up.
Okay. And there'd be appropriate noticing, et cetera. Thank you.
Yes.
Madam Chairs Commissioners, we did a similar workshop when we undertook Phase One and we conducted that at Westmont in the community of Montecito. So the location would be also in Montecito. We've also taken some steps to already begin public outreach. We've been to the Montecito Board of Architectural Review twice. Those meetings were noticed and the Montecito Board of Architectural Review did accept public comment during that time. We've also attended several Montecito Association meetings to listen to some discussions that they've had as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So now, we're ready to move on to public comment. And I have some speaker slips here, John Watson. Thank you, you will have three minutes, Mr. Watson.
Thank you. As you may know, there were some realtors here today and during the Costa de Rinda, there was a vibrant discussion outside between a number of us and they have chosen not to participate after that discussion. I think that they generally agree that some kind of regulation is correct. Their concern is the intensity, 10%, 20%, and I think that they'll participate in that vigorously. Okay, so from a land use point of view, the things that affect the semi-rural, low-intensity, et cetera, it's the number of square feet on a parcel, the height of the structures, the proximity to the setbacks, the nature, quality, density, and type of landscaping and lot coverage, not all of those are currently being addressed. And staff will make the presentation, or the representation that the board didn't authorize that. They're correct in that. The question is, are we really getting our hands on it? So I just want to bring that up. I personally believe that the guidelines are overly generous for small parcels and under-generous for larger parcels. Again, that's not part of it, but possibly in the sense of how many accessory structures, et cetera, that can be addressed somewhat in that. Another issue that's a big, broad issue is how exactly are the guidelines to be used? Right now, staff will say they're just guidelines and in practice, at times, they're completely ignored. Should that be done, does this commission and then ultimately the board actually want these to be taken seriously? And if so, is there abandoning 10% above, 10% below on some of the issues that are specified? And I'd like you to take a look at that. It is the only critical link between the zoning ordinance and the Montecito Community Plan. It's the only way to get even close to the Montecito Community Plan. And if they're ignored, which sometimes they are, I'm sorry to say. Okay, I think that there are also alternate methods than what we're talking about here. What the staff is really talking about is a bottoms-up approach, which is looking at specific regulations that says this number of square feet, this number of buildings, and it's attempting to quantify that. There is another very broad approach, which is to require, much more expensive, there's no question about it, for the applicant, to actually require applicants to go on out and look at the neighborhood within which they're in, and then conform to actually what's there, rather than one size fits all. Every one acre parcel's allowed this, every half acre parcel is that. So I would ask that, you know, people may even think about that. And the last thing is, if this is a bottom-up approach, I'd like to suggest that possibly we could alter the guidelines in a way, in the preamble, to get everyone focused in on what the meaning of low, semi-rural, low intensity, et cetera, is. To that end, I'd like to suggest some changes in verbiage to the first two pages of the guidelines. And there, we have discussed this at the Montecito Association, they don't always necessarily agree with me, surprise, surprise, but I'd like to at least put it out so that people can take a look at it. And I apologize for not getting this to you for you to review it at night, but if I could present it to you now, I'd, I'd like to do that.
Thank you, I think we should give that to David, please.
Thank you, and if you have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, we need to digest this, but we thank you very much for submitting it. And may I just ask if you feel that this neighborhood conformity is something that could be addressed at the MBAR? Or do you think the MBAR does, needs more, more specific instruction?
The MBAR is currently taking the approach that if it's written down, it's something that we will review. If it's not written down, we ignore it. Detached accessory structures are not written down, so we ignore it. So, you know, lot coverage is ignored in the zoning ordinance and the guidelines, so we ignore it. From my personal point of view, and it's speaking as an individual and as an MBAR member, I believe we're not getting at maintain and preserve, because we're not taking a look at the holistic. To really and truly grab onto that, though, it requires, you know, extensive information about adjoining parcels. But I've also noticed that in one case, I, as a board member, I asked for that study to be done. They came in, demonstrated that there were no other accessory structures in the neighborhood, and the board approved it. So I was the only no vote. So that, you know, how do you actually maintain and preserve? So that's the question before you.
Thank you very much.
Is that all?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Next would be Corey Hayman speaking, please.
Good morning. Chair Keller, Commissioners, I will be brief. The Montecito Association generally supports the direction of staff. We have worked with members of MBAR, with the staff, with a former member of the Montecito Planning Commission on both the Phase One and Phase Two guideline revisions. So we believe that the scope is in the right place. I also want to comment a little bit on the concept behind using a percentage of FAR as a basis to control development of detached accessory structures. The idea came from architects on our subcommittee as a way to preserve design and architectural creativity. So as opposed to identifying or limiting the number of detached accessory structures using a percentage of FAR, allowed the design process to determine where to put the square footage on the property. So the threshold number of 10% or 15% of 20% has not been a concrete number, as staff pointed out. 10% may be appropriate on a very small parcel, but maybe 15 or 20% would be more appropriate on a larger parcel. So we do believe that there is a lot of room to put together the right formula on a sliding scale. And then finally, I want to just comment on Mr. Watson's discussion about the preservation of our semi-rural community and density and development. And we do agree that there is room in the preamble to the guidelines that doesn't require a lot of effort with respect to incorporating language about the intent of the guidelines and what they're there for, so as to help with the mission of the MBAR process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Denise Spangler-Adams, who I guess is not here because she had her questions answered. Suzanne Perkins?
Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, I'm Suzanne Perkins, and I've been a Realtor for 26 years, working primarily in Montecito. And John was correct, we were having a very lively conversation in, in the hallway. I think some progress has been made. I would like to say that I did sign the letter that was circulated last night, but after our discussion in the hallway, I'm withdrawing my support for that letter. I have a couple of comments on things that I feel that should be incorporated. First of all, the Montecito Association does an excellent job, and I would probably suggest, I would make a recommendation, that their recommendations take precedent over a lot of the other influences from other committees. They know, they have their hands and feet and involved in what's going on in the community. They do an excellent job, and I would just recommend that you follow their, their direction. I have a couple of comments on some of the proposed language, and this is personal from working 26 years in the community. I really think that the side yard, front yard, rear yard setbacks re, need to be etched in concrete and not allowed to be encroached upon. We don't want to be Los Angeles, where they build side yard to side yard, that the entire lot is under concrete. And I think that takes away from our rural neighborhood. And we do have urban areas more significant, that you, we see higher density, but I think the setbacks have to be adhered to. I would also recommend that no accessory structures be allowed in anything under, under an acre. That the one acre be the guideline by which accessory structures can kick it in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's any further public comment, at this time, we'll close public comment and go back to our, I think it's just for you.
Madam Chair, I think we're, we're just looking for input from the commission and comments from the commission at this point.
Fine, this is only for comment, that was, that was, absolutely.
Do we want to go category by?
I was going to suggest going by the four categories that have been set out by Ms. Steele, but I just did want to ask if we had the ability to expand any of the categories and include, for example, lot coverage, which hasn't been addressed. And the second, separate question I have is, when we make these recommendations, will it result in a potential zoning ordinance amendment? Or is it merely going to be something that is included in the architectural guidelines? So two questions.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, the way we're looking at this now is really the first three issues we identified were those issues that planners and others identified, where they have uncertainty in the zoning ordinances themselves. So those would actually require zoning ordinance amendments. The last issue, which deals with the floor area, is really tied to the floor areas within the Montecito guidelines. And so that would be a case where we would amend the guidelines themselves. So if we look at these four issues, it would be a combination of amendments to the zoning ordinance and an amendment to the guidelines themselves.
Thank you, so right now, there is no reference to floor area ratio within the zoning ordinance?
That's correct, the guidelines themselves do provide floor area. And it's important to recognize that while they set a maximum, that is a recommendation. And BAR has the ability to vary that or make exceptions to it. So it's, it's not like the zoning ordinance where it's a fixed standard and you'd have to seek a modification, for example, to vary it. That's really left to BAR's discretion, and they oftentimes do vary that, depending on the circumstances and the neighborhood setting.
So I think we will take these, excuse me, item by item, the first one being the unenclosed accessory buildings issue. And the recommendation is to include solid roofs and not include lattice or partially open roofs. Is there any discussion, Mr. Newman?
I think I agree wholeheartedly with that conclusion. The only thing I would say, solid to me is a little bit more ambiguous than I would prefer. I would suggest we say a permanent roof. So that as an example, a pergola, which might have on occasion a canvas top that is extended or whatever, wouldn't be deemed to be something with a solid roof. And as I discussed with staff, there is one other aspect of this I don't think we need to address, but I do want to mention, and that is, if by example, somebody had particular needs, ADA-like, so as example, a homeowner had a walker or wheelchair and needed and wanted to have a covered walkway from residence to garage, that those ADA requirements could be utilized as an exception from these limitations. And I just wanted to make that clear, because I believe that's an important accommodation, of course, for us to make. But bottom line, I'm fine with the definition if we just said a permanent roof.
Commissioner Senour, do you have any comments?
I think the addition of permanent is appropriate. The la, the, in the recommendation on page four, the last sentence, staff agrees that unenclosed detached accessory buildings should be subject to the 800-foot limitation. Unenclosed. The example, please, unenclosed.
I believe this would be unenclosed, but with a permanent roof.
Right, that's, and I, I would like that to be added.
That's correct, so you could have, for example, in a gar, a garage, and then the roof line extends out to include a carport that's supported by, by posts. So in that case, we would look at including the entirety of the structure, not just the garage itself.
That raises another issue for me, so if the, if the garage is attached and has a extended roof for a carport, how would that be calculated? As part of its permanent roof?
Madam Chair, are you thinking of a situation where the garage is attached to the primary residence?
Rec, correct, so it's not counted separately, it's included. It's, 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 it's allowed, but we're now attaching a carport or a, another, so we would only calculate that portion of the extension of the permanent roof that was not part of the garage?
Well, I think as a starting point, if it's attached to the primary residence or the garage that's part of that residence, it would be factored in, or that question would really be placed under the existing rules that deal with the floor area of the primary residence. So what we're talking about are structures that are, are detached from the primary residence.
Sorry, good point, absolutely. So it would be a detached garage, therefore, that had an extension of a carport, and you would consider the entire part to be, as you answered, Commissioner Senour, you would consider the entire to be within the 800-foot limitation?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioners, that's correct. And just as a reminder, within the existing floor area calculations, they basically have an exception for up to 800 square feet of garage that's attached to the residence. So in the examples you saw here, we just decided to show the maximum that was allowed. Garage sizes may be varied, but nonetheless, those garages, when they're attached to the primary residence, do not count toward the floor area if they're 800 square feet or less. Once you go above 800 square feet, then you start factoring in the excess square footage into your floor area.
Thank you. I agree with my colleagues that the word permanent might be a better, rather than solid. And if that is the case, and we're talking about structures with the walkway situation that Commissioner Newman is referring to, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be a concern, because it would not be a, I'm not sure, we'd like to make, we'd like to be sure that his example is exempt.
So, Madam Chair, we'll have to look at that in the context of the reasonable accommodation policy and provisions that we have in the ordinance to make sure that that issue is covered and other issues are covered, but understand the intention. So that's, that's enough.
Thank you, and just when you reword the recommendation, if you could, the language is a little unclear because you, you didn't kind of finish out, the partially open or lattice roofs are not allowed. And then, I guess I'm not sure where the last sentence belongs in that.
Again, Madam Chair, it was really just to try and get some input on the concept, so I don't worry about the language in the staff report.
Right, I'm just saying, just be, be cognizant of the fact that I think we were all a little confused by the way that the language came out.
I understand.
We understand your intent, but maybe it could be more clearly stated for those of us who aren't professionals. Thank you, so are we all in agreement on item one of the definition of the unenclosed accessory buildings? Now the height limits, is there any comment on that? Commissioner Newman?
This is a vexing issue for me, I must say. In terms of my own personal calculus here, I'm concerned about, would, for instance, the, the building be visible from the front of the property, from the right-of-way or whatever? And also, would it exceed the existing roof ridge? I personally think an appropriate aesthetic standard for a two-story structure, whether it's one added to another or not, would be that the maximum height would be the lesser of 32 feet or the height of the existing roof ridge for the principal residence. I'm concerned about the verticality being higher than perhaps the existing main residence. And I think that's a viable criterion. But I, too, am concerned, as Slide 10 reflects, how do we deal with the height near property lines? And maybe the setback is, is the best way to do that.
May I just ask, you're, so you're saying that the height of a two-story detached accessory structure should not include, not exceed the main house, which means that if the main house is only one story, then you cannot have a two-story detached accessory structure?
Fair point. Doesn't work. Let me rethink that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Senour?
If the house is two-story, then the additional building would not be higher than the two-story house.
And my concern is to have consistency with what we're talking about with the ADUs, because if we have a 25, I mean, 32 feet is very high. And especially on a small lot, excuse me. And so I would find excuse me. And so I would find consistency with what we've been working on with the ADUs to be important. And if we limit those to 25 feet, which does allow for a second story, then I think that the, the recommendation for the detached accessory structures should be comparable to what we, what comes out regarding the ADUs. Commissioner Senauer?
Yes. I, I find the DAS and the ADU, to have them, to have them consistent would be helpful, if at all possible. I think, I think you could have a DAS and then an ADU above that. My, in a stack situation, is that my understanding correct? It is just the conversion element of a DAS into a, into an ADU is a possibility, correct? And so this confluence of, of all these different structures, if there was a way to have conformity in some way, it would be greatly appreciated language-wise. I think it's going to get, it's complex now and difficult now, and it's not going to get any better. I just see, I just see this as very obtuse. It's very, very difficult when you add in an ADU to this, to this equation, which will happen. I mean, it, it's bound to happen. Height limits, in the coastal zone, you are not allowed to stack DASs, is that correct?
Yeah. Madam Chair, Commissioners, in the coastal zone, it's a little simpler in that there's a height limit of 16 feet. So they don't provide any of the exceptions that are found in the Montecito Land Use and Development Code, which allow essentially the guesthouse cabanas and, pardon me, the, the third, artist studio, thank you, to be above or below another use.
Excuse me, but the overall height limit in the coastal zone is 25 feet?
That, that's correct. However, for, there are provisions in the coastal zoning ordinance for accessory structures that limit them to 16 feet.
Correct. But if you put an accessory structure on top of an ADU or vice versa, would that be allowed in the coastal zone?
Under the current provisions, the height limit for accessory structures is 16 feet. So you could not, you could not do that.
But if the accessory structure is on top of an ADU or vice versa, couldn't you argue that the ADU height limit would apply, not the accessory, not the DAS?
Well, I think in this case, again, there are no provisions that discuss putting accessory structures above or below one another. And so they have just a across-the-board height limit for all accessory structures, which is 16 feet.
Does that include ADUs?
As currently written, yes.
So we just want to avoid a situation where if you have the opportunity for a second story, and you can call one of them an ADU and one of them is an accessory structure, we want to know that you can't argue that, well, this can be 32 feet because that's allowed as under accessory structures. I mean, sorry, so are we going to an op, an example that could not exist?
So, Madam Chair and Commissioners, I think what we're talking about are two different ordinances. So the coastal zone is, is not tempered, the regulations in the coastal zone are not tempered the same way as the inland regulations by state law. Because they, the provisions of the Coastal Act and the provisions of other state laws have equal dignity under the law, and they have to be resolved. So whenever we have a situation where we're dealing with a law like the accessory dwelling unit law in the coastal zone, we have the opportunity to merge those two laws in a different way than we do in the inland area. So that's what you see in the current provisions of the ordinance, where you're, you're not as constrained, or the coastal commission isn't as constrained by state law in the coastal zone. So they're just different. So you wouldn't have a situation in the coastal zone where you have an ADU stacked on an accessory structure, I think is, is my conclusion.
That was the bottom line I was looking for. Thank you.
But it's different than the Montecito LUDC where you don't have that same, well, ability. You don't have that same ability.
So in the Montecito LUD, could you put an accessory structure above an ADU or vice versa?
Yes.
And if that were the case, and there were a different, different height regulation, that might lead to a confusion of whether this could be 32 feet or 25 feet?
No, because the 25 feet is a coastal zoning requirement.
No, I'm just saying, that's in the, in Montecito, not in the coastal zone. So outside the coastal zone, we're talking about a height limit of ADU, two-story ADUs of 25 feet, and a potential height limit of, of DASs of 32 feet.
Understand. I understand.
So that's why we would like the consistency, in case they are stacked on top of each other. So I think that's what we're both aiming for, right, Commissioner Senauer?
Why don't, why don't you just give us that direction, and we'll look at that?
Thank you. Then our direction, I believe, and I think Mr. Newman is in concurrence, we would like a height limit of 25 feet that would be consistent with the height limit on the ADUs. So, that's, yes, sir.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, just to make sure, the situation when you have structures, detached accessory structures, where you have two uses above and below, again, as we reviewed in this slide, it only pertains to guesthouses, artist studios, and cabanas. So one of those uses is going to have to be one of those. It could be, the second use could be the ADU. But the other use by default, and by the current zoning ordinance, would have to be one of these three uses.
Correct. You did make that clear. But it would also be a way of making for a larger ADU, correct? Because there would be an ADU below, and then there could be an artist studio or a guest house above. But they're two separate uses.
Correct.
They can't, they can't be joined and used as one use. Okay. Technically. Commissioner Newman?
Mindful of the saw that consistency is the hobgoblin of small minds. If I'm remembering correctly, our ADU height limitation is 25 feet or the existing roof ridge. So what's the pleasure with respect to the existing roof ridge portion of the ADU definition? If we're seeking true consistency, then that needs to be part of the calculus.
I agree with you. I think we should seek true consistency. It will make for easier application. Are you in concurrence, Commissioners?
Yes. And I think that's the whole narrative of our discussion. Consistency, because this, if it's not clear and consistent, this, the, the viewing of this will be, as, as applications are made, et cetera, be, be a plethora of, of misunderstandings. So the clearer we can be, and the more consistent we can be, the better.
Thank you. So I think we've resolved the height limits, and we're now going on to rear setback regulations. Commissioner Newman?
I believe it should be cumulative.
Commissioner Senauer?
I concur.
And I agree with that. That is the only issue before us. Not the side, not the front. So only the rear setback, correct? Okay. We all are in agreement that we would like it to be cumulative, so as not to exceed the, I believe it's the 30% total.
And, Madam Chair, just to clarify, the reason that we're not talking about the side or the front is that you can't put accessory structures in the side yard or the front yard, right, under the current regulations. So it's not something that we needed to clarify.
That you need to, we need to address. Thank you.
But that's different than an ADU, which have different, you can put it in the front.
Not in the front yard setback?
Oh, oh, no portion of it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. So moving on to number four, floor area. Do you have any thoughts, Commissioner Newman? I'm calling on you.
I'll speak then, since no one else is prepared to.
Your illustrations were very instructive. And I think there needs to be a bright line. I don't think this should be discretionary, because I think when there's discretion, that's when it tends to get blurred and abused. And, but I would concur that a sliding scale would be, seem to be appropriate. And I actually would, and I don't know if this is possible, but I would like to prohibit DASs within a certain size parcel, because they are going to be, ADUs are going to be allowed. And so if we go even to any of your examples, Ms. Steele, that's an incredible development of the property, overdevelopment of the property. And it would seem appropriate that people would be allowed to have one or the other. Because they are allowed a D, an, except, ADU up to half the size of their, of their dwelling unit, and there is no square footage limitation. Up to 50% of the livable area?
Madam Chair, I thi- I think.
To a maximum of 1,200 square feet?
You can convert the existing, half of the existing house up to 1,200 square feet, I think is the way it's written. I, I didn't bring my ADU stuff here because I didn't anticipate we were going to have this much discussion, and my memory is not fabulous. And we haven't made a final decision or recommendation to the board. But my recollection is, if you're converting a portion of the existing house into an ADU, it's a, it's a percentage of the floor area, just of the existing. You can also attach, you can expand.
But you can also build a separate.
I was about to say that.
Okay.
You can build a separate. And the way that you, I think, structured it at your last hearing, and we're coming back to you next week, is that it's a sliding scale of size based upon the parcel size. So I think it starts at 400 square feet, and it, it maxes out at 1,000, is what I recall.
Correct. It's 1,000. Commissioner Senauer?
And I would like for consistency to apply a sliding scale in the same manner, if at all possible, with specifications, which I believe would be helpful as far as having a document and specs, just not a general sliding scale, just kind of, so very particular, similar to an ADU, parcel size, primary residence, et cetera, et cetera, factored in a similar way.
If I can continue, because that was what I was suggesting, that there would be a sliding scale, but that possibly we would look into prohibiting a DAS on a lot of, a quarter acre, for example, where that is, where that is a lot, what is there is permissible, and yet, and an incredible amount of development on a small lot. And I don't know if any of them, I mean, I think, I'll find out what Commissioner Newman feels, but there are two separate issues. A sliding scale and a prohibition on a certain lot size, a smaller lot size. Commissioner Newman?
I would support a sliding scale. Obviously, the mischief will be in the details there. But I would not be in favor of an outright ban. I don't want, I don't believe we should deny some residents the pleasures that might come from having an artist studio or whatever type of additional structure they might want to build. And I think that a sliding scale based on lot size would be appropriate to contain development so that it's not excessive to the site. But I think if we're talking about buildings like a carport, workshop, artist studios, or what have you, I would not be in favor of a total ban, because I think it really does deny people some of the expected and appropriate pleasures and uses for their property. So long as the scale is appropriate, I think would be fine. And I think that having something of a sliding scale on square footage basis makes sense.
May I just ask, so the slide that you have up is a 10% DAS allowance. So there's a DAS of 235 square feet, which if we think about it, is approximately 10 by 12, the size of a usable room, studio, et cetera. And then in addition, they are also allowed, you're giving an example of a 600 fair, square foot ADU. And is, that is, at this point, as Ms. Black has said, we were talking about a sliding scale up to 40% of lot coverage? Was that it? I'm sorry, I can't recall. But I would like to, to find some way to coordinate these two options so that we don't get incredibly overbuilt properties. So does anyone recall what the recommendation is for a D, an ADU? And do my fellow commissioners share my concern that, yes, people should be allowed to enjoy their property, but they may have to make choices in terms of what they do, that, so that the density and the development of their neighborhood is respected?
Yes. I certainly con- concur with your, with your narrative. I think it's, it, it can be, it can be addressed. I think a prohibition perhaps is not the path to take. But I do believe it could be accommodated appropriately with particular specifications and addressed in that way.
Is there any way we could make the size of the ADU? Right now, the detached accessory structure would not be included in the square footage, correct, of the property?
Chair Keller, correct. The square footage would not be counted in the house net floor area.
So any limitation on the AD, on the ADU that we tied to square footage of the house or development on the property would not take into account the existence of an accessory structure? That was a question.
As I understand it, that would be correct.
Okay.
And just to give you an idea, for this particular slide here, it's about 40% lot coverage on this small parcel.
Madam Chair?
I was just waiting for Ms. Black.
So, Madam Chair and Commissioners, I think that the two things that you've been asking about in terms of how we're dealing with it in, in the ADU ordinance, as of today, not recommend, or not voted on by your commission yet, is the maximum lot coverage could not exceed 40% of all the development. And so it sounds like that's at about 40%, because the pool doesn't count. So the pool makes it look a bit more massive. And then the maximum ADU size would range from 400 square feet on lots less than 10,000 square feet to 600 square feet on lots of 10,000 to just under 20,000 square feet, 800 square feet on lots from 20,000 square feet to an acre, and 1,000 square feet on, over an acre. And then the detached accessory structure is the, is the same. It's 1,000.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So in this example, that detached AD, that the ADU, rather than being 600 square feet, could only be 400?
No, it would be six, because the lot size is 10, at 10,000.
Is 10,000. So it's 10,000 and above.
This would be sort of your worst-case, largest ADU on the smallest lot. I mean, 10,000 is the cutoff for a 600-square-foot ADU.
Thank you. Okay, that, so that is the maximum. And Ms. Steele is saying that this is approximately 40%, which was the other guideline that we were looking at. Thank you.
So this is, so the drawing, I think, is consistent with the, the proposal under ADU.
Thank you. That's helpful. Commissioner Newman? Okay. Then, it looks, it appears that if we have those limitations in place on the ADUs, and it is scaled down based on lot size, and then the accessory structure is limited to a percentage of the square footage of the house, that it does meet our concerns of the 40% development. So I could support that. And Commissioner Senauer is nodding her head?
Yes, I concur.
So I think what we need to say is that this would be the case on a lot of 10,000 to the next level, which would be 2499? And what was the next size lot size? I'm sorry.
It's, um...
It's under 10,000, 10,000 to 19,000, 999, 20,000 to an acre, and then over an acre, or kind of the break points for the ADU.
So then, should we come up with a formula, or can we start with this as our basis and say that we would like a sliding scale based on increased lot size?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Newman?
I think, considering the next steps down the road, if we have a consensus on direction and say that we're in favor of a sliding scale, that that is adequate for today, and I would prefer to get public input at the workshop, have additional M-bar input, MA input, and then we can consider greater specifics later. Because I think, looking at the actual numbers and whatnot that come from this process, I'd, I'd rather wait till we grind the sausage before we start cutting it up.
I think that's a good suggestion, because we don't have any sense. But I think if we know this is a good starting place, that this would be the maximum allowable that we could support, I think we should go from there and then adopt the sliding scale.
I agree. This is, there's a lot to come after this, public outreach, et cetera, et cetera, much more conversation about this. We are simply giving our thoughts and comments about a starting point, and I think we all concur with that.
Yes, thank you. And I only want to make one more comment, which has been made numerous times. It would be, because we want to respect the opinions of our experts on the Board of Architectural Review, it would be really helpful if we had more information about their deliberations. And I'm afraid that the minutes that we've been provided are really minimal, and it would be nice to have more, more comments from them about what their considerations were. And if, if there were times when we know this is going to go back and forth between the MPC and the NBAR, if an effort could be made to give us a little more input as to their thoughts, it would be really very much appreciated. So those are our comments. I think staff has a good record of them. And if that is the case, then I think we have concluded our business. Is there anything else from staff? Very good. Then we will adjourn until next Wednesday at 9:00 AM. Thank you very much.